A. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Counselor Braden. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Janie.
Present.
Counselor Mahia. Counselor O'Malley. And Counselor Wu.
Thank you so much. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I would ask that all counselors and all guests to please rise. Counselor Flynn will introduce our clergy today, and after the invocation is delivered, I ask that you remain standing so that we can recite the Pledge of Allegiance together. Thank you so much, Counselor Flynn.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to introduce Sister Lois for being here today to give the opening prayer. Sister Lois is a sister of Saint Joseph in Boston. She's a registered nurse and a longtime career in nursing. She served at Bethany Healthcare Center, Boston City Hospital, in the Pine Street and Nurses Clinic. Also from her nurse in healthcare and public health, Sister Lois keeps active in many organizations throughout greater Boston, especially helping our veterans and persons with disabilities. I had the opportunity to travel with Sister Lois several years ago to Washington DC to visit the World War II Memorial with some of the veterans of greater Boston, and Sister Lois and Sister Florence provided exceptional care to our older veterans. We want to say thank you to Sister Lois, and it's an honor for us to welcome you to City Hall.
Thank you. So, settle our hearts for just a moment in prayer. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice. We ask blessings on this session of city council members as they deliberate on behalf of the citizens of Boston. Help them as leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but, "What do we need to learn?", "How might we need to change?", and "To whom do we need to listen?". Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that they are not only leaders, but also servants, and it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Give them a wisdom of this city, as we would love to make it, a city where the weak are protected and none go hungry, a city where benefits are shared so that everyone can enjoy them, a city whose different people and cultures live with tolerance and mutual respect, a city where peace is built with justice and justice is fired with love. Remind them that, no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor, and that through wealthy ages, prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know to do what is right, good, and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out, and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of the community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. This we pray, in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, and that we hold good and right and true. Amen.
Thank you so much for that inspiring message. Before we get on and underway with special presentations, I just want to acknowledge that we are joined here in the chamber by the Superintendent of Boston Public Schools, Brenda Cassellius. Are you still with us? Thank you for being here. Superintendent Nora Baston from the Boston Police Department is with us. Thank you for being here. And Mr. Woodhouse is among our many distinguished guests today. Thank you, sir, for your service. Thank you for being here. So, today being our first meeting of Black History Month, I'm really pleased that we have a special presentation from Page Academy, which is in my district. And before I say a few words about Page, I'm just going to ask our amazing young people who are here with us today to open up our council meeting with a drumming circle, an African drumming circle. This is how Page Academy opens up many of their events, celebratory events, and so, we're just going to take just a few minutes to hear from the children from Page Academy, if that's okay. Is that all right? Wonderful. Brother Joe, thank you.
My name is Brother Joe Cook, our principal at Page Academy. We're going to open up with "Fanga La Fia". It means "Welcome and peace be to you." After that prayer, what else could we have?
Wonderful. I'm going to ask that the Page Academy folks join me here in the dais. Yes. Everyone gets to come. If we can get these drums off this door. Wonderful. Wonderful. Please, please, gather round, gather round. Gather round. Wonderful. So, I am particularly honored today to invite Page Academy to be with us as we kick off Black History Month. Page Academy has just celebrated 50 years of educating our children, and you saw a wonderful example of how they opened up their time together, their space, to call upon the ancestors and all that we believe in to give us strength. And so, I'm really grateful for the work that you've done over the last 50 years. I'm also very proud to welcome you here as someone, if people don't know the history, Page Academy is one of the last standing historically black freedom schools that started in the '60s, and this is one of the last ones that is still standing. In Boston, we had a number of schools like this. One in particular was a school that I attended for kindergarten and first grade that is no longer here, and so, I have a special place in my heart for Page Academy, not just because you're in my district, but because of the good work that you are doing in making sure that our children have a strong foundation. God's pushing his buttons. A strong foundation so that you grow up to become amazing productive adults. I want to invite Sister Angela or Brother Cook just to say a few words about why Page Academy is so important and beloved in our community, and to encourage and inform folks on how they can support your good work. So, Sister Angela?
We first want to thank the city council and especially President Janie, Kim Janie, who is from our district and is very visible to us, and say that we really appreciate this opportunity to share our culture with you. Page Academy really is a culturally resonant school that speaks to the culture of all the children who attend, no matter what their culture is. That's important for us to teach from that culture. And we're a nursery and elementary school, so we have children from birth through the sixth grade, which is 12 years. This is our elementary school. These are our elementary school children. So, we really have a lot of academics in music and theater and art and dance and yoga, as well as STEM programs and computer labs that we go to Northeastern use. So, we're kind of a school without walls, where we use all the resources of the city, and this is one that we want our children to feel comfortable in. So, we really want to thank you again, and we are so happy that you've invited us to open your session.
Wonderful. I'm going to ask my colleagues to join us for a quick picture. Is that okay? Come on up. See you. Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you again to Page Academy. At this time, I would like to invite Counselor Asabi George up to the dais. She has a special presentation for National Girls and Women's in Sports Day, and I believe we have some young women who are going to join us. Counselor Asabi George?
Thank you, Madam President. We've got some room on this side, too. It makes me smile, watch all of these young women come up to the podium, because it reminds me and should remind all of you how strong our young women are here in the city of Boston. I'm incredibly excited to present today's resolution recognizing National Girls and Women in Sports Day, and I'm proud to do that with this amazing group of athletes behind me. I'm also happy to be joined by an athlete in her own right, Superintendent Cassellius, Superintendent Nora Baston, and and a few graduates of BPS who have also joined us today. This year marks the 34th Annual Girls and Women in Sports Day, a national observance celebrating the extraordinary achievement of girls and women in sports. Its theme, "Lean Her Forward", is a continuation from last year, and I hope that the athletes here that have joined us will be leading each other and others forward. Today, we recognize how sports empower, strengthen, and give confidence to girls and women in sports to become leaders and champions for other women. Today, I'm reminded of my own time playing softball when I was in high school, a little bit in college, and then when I was coaching at East Boston High. As I remember my former student athletes, I'm also reminded of how crucial it is to protect Title IX and advance gender equity in sports. When we talk about female athletes, we need to be at a point where girls and women who play sports are simply considered athletes. I'd also like to thank for joining us today Jessica Sheeran, who is a public health advisor for the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, making today possible. I'd like to introduce, and we were in the Curly earlier this morning talking about the field of play, we referenced the softball field, we referenced the basketball court. We also have among us two young women who have played football, and I'd like to welcome from East Boston High, I've got a special place in my heart from East Boston High, although Fenway High School's in the house today, Madison Parnell, who is a football player from East Boston High.
Good morning. My name is Madison Parnell, and I am a senior at East Boston High School. During my time at East Boston High, sports have been very important to me. The sports that I play help identify me as me. The sport I am most proud of is football. I'm a defensive and offensive tackle, and I have played some three back. The reason why it is so important to me is because I have done what no other female at East Boston High has, you know, done. And there was also so many people rooting against me, and no matter what, I still pushed through it, and that's why I'm very proud. Football has also made me realize how strong I am. Me as a regular person, I'm very not confident, and I second-guess myself a lot, but when I step onto the football field, the track field, or even in the shot put cage, I feel confident. I am confident. And I'm very proud to be the first ever girl in history at East Boston High to play on the varsity football team. And I hope I can be an example for other girls who want to play in male-dominated sports. Thank you for everyone in this room for believing in me. And girls athletics, too, especially Counselor Asabi George. To all my female athletes, thank you for being an example to me, and I hope I can be an example to you.
I'd like to note that we are joined by students, with students from Madison Park, Charlestown High, Boston Green Academy, the John D. O'Brien, my alma mater, Snowden, Josiah Quincy, Boston Latin, East Boston High School, Excel High School, New Mission, and Boston Latin Academy, as well as Tech Boston, but in a special way, we've been joined by graduate Sarah Lawton from Fenway High School, Larissa Ross, who is a graduate of Fenway High now running the Zone at New Mission. It's just been really great to have everyone here, and one of the lessons we learned this morning was, A, female athletes or athletes need to learn to brag more about their accomplishments, and those early morning practices, my biggest takeaway is when you have those early morning practices, you get to see the morning first, and I think that's a really just special message to share. I'd love colleagues to join us for a photo.
Alrighty. Thank you. I'm going to ask my colleagues to please take your seats so we can resume the meeting. Madam Clerk, if you could please amend the attendance report to include Counselor Campbell and Counselor Edwards.
Thank you.
Now, on to the first order of business, the approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand as approved. Seeing and hearing, no objections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk? I would like to take docket 0322 out of order. Could you please read the docket?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0322, Counselor Bach offered the following order for hearing regarding the current state of cooperative housing in Boston and strategies for its further expansion.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and colleagues. I'm thrilled to be speaking here for the first time as the new city councilor for District Eight, representing the neighborhoods of West End, Beacon Hill, Back Bay, Fenway, and Mission Hill, and to be speaking on this hearing about housing cooperatives. I ran for city council because I felt that we're facing urgent challenges that require a commensurate urgency of action, on issues from housing to public transportation to climate change, you know, income inequality. Too often, we're making good incremental changes but not necessarily moving on the trajectory you need when a problem becomes existential, when the question is whether you're going to take bold, imaginative, transformative action or miss the jump. But I'm a historian by trade, and what I found so encouraging about Boston's history as I was running for this office was just the number of times in our civic history that we have made that kind of transformative change, that we have instituted new policy that's really shifted the field. What is past, I think, in that front can be prologue for us. In District Eight, for example, the Esplanade and the Fens represent the creation of major new parkland in order to control stormwater, which is a type of terraforming that we now need to learn again. In the Back Bay, one of the neighborhoods I represent, we created a whole new neighborhood, and then we created the Groundwater Trust as a successful strategy for sustainably managing a precious resource. Further back still, we invented new ways for us and for America of thinking about the public good by founding the first public school, the first public library, both radical statements about what kind of education we thought needed to be free to all. And when we faced a transportation crisis a century ago, we dug out beneath the Boston Common, which is Boston's original public good, and made the first public subway in America, which then formed the basis of a new system that could be the way that we tackle our traffic challenges a century later, if we could see our way to making it more extensive, reliable, and free. In housing, one of the proud Bostonian traditions which encouraged me most as I was knocking doors all over District Eight was the cooperative housing that dots the landscape of my district. Over the last 60 years, we've found again and again opportunities to form these mixed-income self-governing communities that now anchor many of their respective neighborhoods. After knocking down the West End, for example, and building largely luxury housing there, we finally got in West End Place a mixed-income cooperative housing development, and Noah Lucia, who I think is here, is now raising, I think, the first third-generation residence of that co-op. In East Fenway, people like Matt Dahl, who I see over there, had the vision to take an old little city hall, which had previously been a trade school, which still has a WPA mural in it, which before that was a mansion, to take that building being surplus by the city and turn it into a 46-unit housing cooperative that called Fensgate, which is now one of the most tight-knit communities that I know. And in 1960, we took a piece of BRA land and built a 276-unit tower called Charles Bank, which has now been filled for decades by people who enliven and help organize every event in Mission Hill. Several of them are in the audience. Tony Combs, for instance, over there, organizes the monthly Mission Hill Crime Watch meetings, but every party, every occasion, Charles Bank is this community 24 stories high that really like is the beating heart of Mission Hill. But I'll return to Charles Bank in a moment. The thing I want to note about all of these communities is that they were created with the help of the city, city land, city resources, and they've really worked to anchor people. So, many residents there measure their tenure in decades, at a time when that's becoming less and less common in our city. We often talk, when we talk about housing these days, about market forces beyond our control, but But I like to think of those forces more like the tides. And you can keep a boat in harbor even as the tide rises and falls around it if you drop a good anchor. We've done this before through cooperative housing and through public housing and through the other ways that we anchor people in place even as those tides rise and fall. And the past is prologue and now we need to do it again. We need to do it at an even greater scale. We have a tension in this country and in the city between housing as a form of shelter and community and housing as a form of capital holding, as a commodity. And the equity-building aspect of housing, that second piece, we have to acknowledge, has always been key to our middle class. It's been homeownership. But lately, the scale is tipping far too much in that direction to housing as capital, to the point that we're hollowing out that first and primary purpose, which is that housing is meant to house people. Limited equity cooperatives, which many of the ones that I've mentioned here today are, are particularly special, I think, on this front, because perhaps better than any other type of housing, they resolve that tension. They enable people to buy into a housing ownership structure at a much more modest price than a traditional down payment, plan their lives around predictable housing costs, and then sell their share back when they depart to recover their equity with some appreciation, although not a market windfall. In a society where capital is increasingly concentrated into few hands, limited equity cooperatives spread capital holding out. And in a society where capital too often calls the tune for governance, limited equity cooperatives govern capital collectively and community together. In other words, they're a mechanism, to my mind, for seeding a true economic democracy. Cooperatives also have a way of cultivating civic virtue. When I knock a door at a co-op like Fensgate, I know that if I come back the next day and knock the neighboring door, that that person will already have talked to her neighbor about me. And when, you know, we were collecting, I was collecting signatures for both sides of the recount, I dropped by the Beacon Hill Friends' House, another co-op in my neighborhood, and over dinner, we passed around the signature sheet and twenty people signed as we talked about the life of the city. I think there's something about cooperatives and their practices, these practices of self-government, that instill in residents that pride of self-governance, the knowledge that each of us can join with others to shape the environment we live in, but without the hubristic myth of self-sufficiency. Self-governance, but no idea of self-sufficiency because we know that we're doing it all together. I can't think of a better way to summarize the ethos that we need in this day and age for a healthy civic life. As Barry Tumey, who's also here from Charles Bank, always says, "There should be ten Charles Banks." And I say, "Maybe twenty." Our successful, large-scale housing cooperatives are much too well-kept a secret. So I'm calling for a hearing to explore the conditions for their success and to ask the question of how, as a city, we can support the creation of more cooperative housing at a greater scale. Cooperative housing is far from the only solution to our housing crisis. We also need many more deeply subsidized units and other measures. But in housing cooperatives, we have a proven tactic. We have a transformative, imaginative thing that we have done before for keeping Bostonians from all walks of life in our city, and we need to double down on it. We can create more cooperative housing through uses of public land. DND is doing a twenty-three-unit limited equity co-op new in the Highland Park neighborhood. We need to do more of that. Or parcel assembly, or maybe a revolving line of credit, city credit, that helps our tenants make the original purchase they're building. All of those are things I'd like us to explore. There's a piece of legislation called the Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act up at the State House right now, which maybe just got reported out this morning, not unconfirmed. But I'm supporting it, the Walsh Administration's supporting it. That would give us a great new tool to help tenants that want to buy their multifamily buildings upon sale. And if that passes, we could create a really robust city program to support them on that front. But in the meantime, we can't afford to wait. We've got to think about how we chart the course for the future of cooperative housing in Boston now. That future is also about preserving our past, because cooperatives steward our living history. Some of our cooperatives are homes for some of our greatest citizens. So today, I wanted to end by highlighting Enoch Woodhouse, or Woody, a resident of the Charles Bank Cooperative, who recently turned ninety-three just a couple of weeks ago, and is here with us today. Because I think here at the launch of Black History Month in 2020, we can learn a lot from someone from the nineteen twenties who still gives so much to this community and has his whole life. Woody grew up here in Boston, raised in the Roxbury Housing Projects. After he graduated English High in nineteen forty-four, enlisted. Served as a Tuskegee Airman, part of the community that shamed President Truman into integrating the armed forces by defending our nation in uniform even when it didn't see fit to treat them as equal citizens. The story I heard him tell, Woody was kicked off a train on his first trip south to training camp for the color of his skin. "Don't take this train, you have to take the next one. Comes in ten hours." I've heard him muse once about why that experience didn't embitter him, why it instead stoked his resolve to break down barriers, a resolve that he shows all the time. I think it's because, I think it's because Woody was raised with so much love and faith that he knows for sure that his dignity is his own and can't be threatened. He wears it with the confidence that he wears his skin, and I think it allows him and has always allowed him to reach out a hand, secure in that dignity. And I think all of us who interact with him feel that. Woody went to Officer Candidate School, became Lieutenant Colonel Woodhouse, then went to Yale, then to BU Law School, served in JAG, practiced law in the city, worked for the State Department, was at one point the Assistant Corporation Counsel for this city. He has, at every step in his life, been a pathbreaker. And Woody was involved in nineteen sixty when Charles Bank was first built, not without a fight, as a limited equity co-op of two-hundred-seventy-six units stretching twenty-four stories tall. It was done on BRA land, and I think this is important to note at a time when the federal government has really stepped back. It was one of the very first redevelopment projects in all of Boston that was completed without federal funds. Now sixty years later, it has housed literally thousands of people from all walks of life, and it's absolutely one of the most vibrant residential communities that I know. And Woody is its most treasured resident. Content to mostly sit back and let others run the meetings these days, not always, mostly, but always there if you need historical context or warning about the little course corrections required to keep a diverse, equitable, self-governing community on track. He's the conscience of the place, a blessing and an example to all of us who know him, whether at Charles Bank or at my church, Trinity, where we worship together, or at one of the many other places that he astonishes at age ninety-three with his mix of infectious energy, lawyerly wit, and deep wisdom. It should go without saying, but I'm gonna say it, Boston has to be a place where people can live their whole lives. A place with homes for our elders to share their wisdom with us. And homes for our little ones, too, the other end of the age spectrum that, as we've seen this week, is being driven out of the city. When market logic takes over, you get a city that only has homes for current high-wage earners, not the two ends of every life where we most feel our dependence on one another. To do that, to squeeze our elders and our children out of our community, is a community destroying insanity. And I think we just have to recognize that those are parameters we can't allow to take hold. People might look at Charles Bank, where Woody lives, right on Huntington Ave, and see a very tall tower. It looms so high that you might be very unlikely to call it human scale. But to me, human scale is not just five to six feet. Human scale is relational, it's community, and so when you build a building that creates a home for community, that's human scale. And it's also temporal. The human scale of time is a lifetime. So cooperatives are really housing on a human scale. The right economic scale to allow ordinary people to build equity, the right temporal scale to house someone for a lifetime, the right civic scale to nurture the seeds of democracy. That's why I'm filing this hearing order, to look at how we can support them and expand this form of housing. What we need to create together is a Boston where people can live full lives in diverse communities, a Boston that's really human scale, even when, as with Woody, the humans in question are larger than life. Thank you.
English High School.
Thank you so much, Counselor Bach. Is anyone else looking to speak or add their name on this docket? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, and please also add the Chair. Docket 0322 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Now we're gonna go back to our regular order on the agenda. For those watching at home, the agenda's very short today, and so we will move right to matters recently heard. Madam Clerk, if you could please read docket 0191.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0191, Message and Order Extending the City's Acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-two B, Section Nineteen, to be effective until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Upon my approval and execution of a written agreement with the Public Employee Committee, known as PEC, the PEC will continue to be the exclusive bargaining representative for the Coalition of Public Employees Bargaining Unions and Retirees of the City of Boston with respect to health insurance coverage until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The agreement extends reforms agreed upon in the current PEC agreement and adds further saving estimated to equal approximately sixty million over the five-year period. It also anticipates continued efforts to achieve additional savings through future health insurance procurement.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach, who is the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. No longer a maiden. The Committee on Ways and Means held a public hearing on this docket this past Monday, February third, at one PM. We heard from the city administration, so Emma Handy, the Chief Financial Officer, Anne Marie Noonan, then from Alyssa Cadillac, who represents the, who's the Chair of the PEC and represents labor, and then also from Pam Kocher of the Boston Municipal Research Bureau. The issue that the docket concerns is we have this system we've had since 2011 of having all of our public employee unions jointly negotiate around healthcare. We've twice reached five-year agreements. We've now just reached a third five-year agreement, and so the question before the Council is whether to extend the authorization to do healthcare bargaining this way and allow that agreement for the next five years to come into effect. All parties who spoke to us on Monday recommended passage of the docket, and I think, having looked at it, you know, it's a challenge that we're constantly balancing. Healthcare costs can, just as we saw sort of a decade ago, really spiral to a point where they're eating more and more of our city budget, and that limits all the other things that we want to fund, including housing, everything else. On the flip side, it's really important that our public workers have good healthcare and not suffer from crippling costs themselves. So that's the balance that we're trying to strike. The state took a more draconian approach by moving to the Group Insurance Commission, which achieves more dramatic savings but at greater cost to workers. We've instead taken this middle way. I, as the Chair, found the testimony in favor of an extension of the PEC convincing, and so I am recommending that this docket ought to pass.
Thank you so much. Counselor Bach seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0191. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0191 has been passed. Now we'll move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clerk, if you could please read docket 0321.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0321, Counselor Asabi George offered the following resolution recognizing February ninth, twenty twenty, as winter walk day in the City of Boston.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Asabi George. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for, I think, suspension and passage of this resolution today as this Sunday is winter walk day here in the City of Boston. We had a similar resolution last year, and just want to acknowledge the work of the Winter Walk Organization and all the community members that join them and join us for the day. I hope that all of you will consider attending. It's a quick, brisk, early Sunday morning walk, and it's a great way to start the day. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else looking to speak to the matter or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, and please also add the Chair. Counselor Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0321. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0321 has been adopted. Moving on to docket 0323, Madam Clerk.
Docket 0323, Counselor Campbell offered the following order for hearing to explore and recommend diversity initiatives for City of Boston Public Safety Agencies.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This hearing is a refile, originally filed in 2018 with a report I released in January of 2019. So I've attached that report to the hearing order. And if it's not attached, we can make sure that everyone gets a copy of it. But as we all know, Boston is increasingly diverse, multilingual, multicultural, and we know that diversity in our public service jobs allows government and our leaders to better serve our residents. Specifically, in our public safety agencies, it builds trust between community and public safety officials. It creates more inclusive cultures in our department. And lastly, but probably just as important or more important, it offers our residents access to good, high-paying jobs. Currently, the City of Boston's residents are forty-four point nine percent white, twenty-two point seven percent black, nineteen point four percent Hispanic, and nine point four percent Asian. Over fifty-five percent of Bostonians are people of color. Almost fifty-two percent are female, and almost thirty-eight percent speak a language other than English at home. Yet, our departments are overwhelmingly, our public safety departments are overwhelmingly white, male, and English-speaking. In preparation for this hearing order, I reached out to BPD, EMS, and the Fire Department for updated geographic information. And I wanted to thank them for not, I want to thank them for not only providing updated figures, but given that most of the figures are due to change soon because of new training cohorts and vacant positions that will likely be filled, I went ahead and listed the 2018 figures in the hearing order. But an initial review of the updated figures I just received have left me concerned because despite the hard work of individuals in these various departments, including folks in the administration and the Office of Workforce Development, the figures I'm about to list from 2018 have not changed in the last two years. So literally, at most, one or two percent, it's gone up, but for the most part, the figures from 2018 are what we're still working with. This is why I absolutely think that when working to increase the number of women and people of color at EMS, at our Fire Department, at our Police Department, we need a comprehensive approach. One tool will not do it. In 2018, these were the figures, and like I said, they have not drastically changed. Of the two thousand seven hundred, of the two thousand and seventy-three BPD officers, sixty-seven percent were white, twenty-two percent were black, nine percent Hispanic, two percent Asian, thirteen percent female. Of the fifteen hundred, almost fifteen hundred Boston firefighters, seventy-two percent were white, nineteen percent were black, eight percent were Hispanic, and less than one percent were Asian, and about one percent were female. This was back in 2018. That hasn't drastically changed. Of the three hundred and seventy-two EMS technicians, sixty-eight percent white, thirteen percent black, seven percent Hispanic, one percent Asian, thirty-two percent female. All of these departments obviously drastically different than the demographics of the City of Boston. It gets even worse as you go to the top-tier rankings of the Police Department, the Fire Department, and EMS. Of the hundred and twenty-one Police Department lieutenants, captains, and superintendents, eighty-six percent are white, twelve percent are black, two percent Hispanic, one percent Asian, seven percent female. Fire Department, as you go up to the deputy level, district chiefs, the captains, lieutenants, eighty-three percent white, twelve percent black, five percent Hispanic, zero are Asian, and less than one percent are female. and less than one percent are female. EMS, as you go higher in the rankings, chiefs, superintendents, captains, lieutenants, seventy-three percent white, eighteen percent black, nine percent Hispanic, zero Asian, and about twenty percent female. Again, drastically different from the demographics of the City of Boston. And like I said, our Boston and women of color want these jobs and are absolutely qualified. For our departments to be reflective of the demographics of the City of Boston, like I said, we're gonna need a comprehensive approach. In the report I put out in January 2019, and while I'm, why I'm bringing it back is because much of the things articulated in that report have yet to be adopted or moved on, either by the administration or folks within their respective departments. So I think this is an opportune time to bring it back, because this issue still remains an issue. And what did I release? There was ten recommendations, and all of the recommendations were practical. I even spelled out in the report where the City of Boston had the power to execute on that recommendation, and then where we had to go to the state for them to execute on a recommendation. But the first started with just being transparent about the problem, making the data accessible to the pub, to the public. In the hearing we held last year, I was shocked to learn that these numbers that I just cited are not readily available to the public. You cannot go on the website, on our City of Boston dashboard, to find them. In order for me to get these numbers, I had to track down various folks at the respective departments to get, to get the data, to then bring it to the hearing, to bring it to the public. If we're serious about solving an issue, we have to name the problem, and to do that, folks need the data, and we should make it readily available. That was recommendation number one, and it still is something we have to do. The second was establishing a consistent definition of diversity for all of our public safety departments, including, of course, it means more women, more people of color, but if you pull it apart, what else does it mean? It was surprising to me that each department had a different definition or working definition of how they define diversity. And when you go out of the public safety realm, other departments either had a different definition or no definition at all. Another recommendation was adequately resourcing our diversity officers. It is great that the Police Department and the Fire Department have diversity officers, but they have no staff, they have no budget. If we're serious about them effectuating change with respect to these numbers, they need a budget and they need staff. The cadet program, to the mayor, to give the mayor and the administration credit, this body, working with the administration, passed legislation to create a cadet program for the Fire Department that is sitting at the State House, we're gonna have to push and push for that to happen again, but what I remind the administration of is that cadet program, that piece of legislation, that alone will not solve the issue. The other issue that we have to talk about, and that many are unwilling to talk about, is civil service. Civil service, the process by which we hire and promote folks within our public safety agencies. Many folks wanna say civil service is about taking away jobs from our veterans. I do not agree with that assessment. If we are serious about changing the numbers in terms of women and people of color, we have to talk about the elephant in the room, and the elephant in the room is the civil service. And in the report, I don't say do away with it, what I do say is, we should study it. We should hire someone to do an objective study on the pros and cons of civil service. I think that's low-hanging fruit. That recommendation has yet to be moved on, and I hope in working with the administration in our departments, that is something we can do. And the hope is that when we get a report that looks at the pros and cons of civil service, we might then have recommendations about how we change that process to allow for more women and people of color to actually join the department. And I'll give you an example, the state police, for example, they don't give absolute preference to veterans, they use a point system, and even they are still struggling to have adequate women and people of color. Some municipalities across the Commonwealth have actually opted out of civil service because they wanted more flexibility in their hiring, to be able to hire more women and people of color. We, at a minimum, in the City of Boston, should study it, look at the pros and cons. That was one recommendation. Other recommendations included the lawsuits. We need to stop challenging and appealing every lawsuit that literally makes it harder for this city to hire women and people of color. And I wanna thank you, Madam President, for the partnership when it came to the hair test, for example, that we've been talking about for years, and other colleagues that signed on to say, the hair test doesn't work, it discriminates, stop using it, do something else. There are other policies and things in place that are prohibitive, or at least don't allow for folks like women and people of color to be hired, and we appeal these rather than sitting at the table and saying, we can do better. The recommendations also include other recommendations around residency, and I wanna thank Counselor Flaherty for his work around the residency requirement. And lastly, one recommendation where the report ends is talking about the culture of the department itself. I don't care how many women of, women and people of color you get into a space, if we do not change and shift the culture of a space to be welcoming, inclusive, for folks to create space to have sometimes very uncomfortable conversations, none of it will matter. And so in the report, I talk about, it's not enough to just have implicit bias training, we did a racial equity training, that's one piece, we need to actually do a lot more than that, and there are creative tools that we can, policies and practices that we can adopt to shift culture in departments, and so I end with that recommendation in the report. And the report builds on the advocacy of other electeds who've been doing work in this space for a long time, state and local electeds, as well as folks in the advocate space, Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights, the Volcans, Mamleel, however you feel about these groups, they have been pushing on these issues for probably decades. We celebrate, for example, the recent passing of Jeep Jones, someone who has been an, was an advocate for every person in the City of Boston to take their rightful place. And what he meant by that is that people of color, black and brown people in particular in the City of Boston, that they be afforded the same opportunity and access. And this report, I think, does a really good job, and not to sort of pat myself on the back, but I think does a really good job after extensive conversations with a wide stakeholder of people, to put forth concrete recommendations to move us in a better direction with respect to affording opportunity and access to women and people of color for these jobs. So I look forward to having the hearing and expediting it hopefully quickly with the administration, all of you joining in this effort to hopefully put us on a path that increases the number of women and people of color in these departments. Thank you for allowing me a little bit more time to speak and to talk a little bit more about the report. Looking forward to a hearing on this matter. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor Campbell. Anyone else looking to speak on this or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, and please also add the Chair. Docket 0323 will be referred to the Committee of Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Now moving on to docket 0324. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the docket.
Docket number 0324, Counselor Asabi George offered the following resolution recognizing National Girls and Women in Sports Day.
Thank you so much. So we heard from Counselor Asabi George earlier in the meeting, during the special presentation, but I did want to give anyone else the opportunity to speak on that resolution or add their name. Anyone looking to speak or add their name? Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flaherty, obviously Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, and please also add the Chair. Counselor Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0324. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Docket 0324 has been adopted. We're now moving on to personnel orders. Madam Clerk, if you could please read docket 0325 into the record.
Docket 0325, Counselor Janey for Counselor Flaherty.
Counselor Flaherty seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0325. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0325 has been passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0326?
Thank you. Docket 0326, Counselor Janey for Counselor Mejia.
Thank you. Counselor Mejia seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0326. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0326 has been passed. Moving on to late files, and I've been informed by the clerk that there are none. Thank you, everyone gets a gold star again, two weeks in a row. Wonderful. Now moving on to the green sheets. Anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Okay. No one does, so we will move on to the next part of the agenda, which is the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are two additions to the consent agenda, seeing and hearing no objections. Those items have been moved. Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda has been adopted. Anyone looking to make an announcement today? Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I just wanted to inform the councils and the public of an upcoming meeting on Friday at six-thirty PM at Josiah Quincy School. It is to provide public information, medical information, on the coronavirus that is, that we've seen here in Boston recently, across the country, but especially in China. But this is an opportunity for public health officials from the city and the state to provide the most accurate and updated information to our community here in Boston, especially the Chinese community. I'll be work, I'll be there along with my staff, and it's an opportunity to learn from public health professionals on exactly what is happening in our city and our country. I've been working closely with Chief Madi Martinez almost every day on this issue. I know I, obviously, I represent a large Chinese population, as does Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, and Counselor Edwards as well. This is a public health concern. It's also a language access concern. We wanna make sure we provide the most updated and accurate information to the Chinese community in their language. So that's a critical part of public health is, is language access and communication. And finally, Madam President, I wanted to add that across the country, we have seen a lot of anti-Chinese sentiment taking place. I've noticed it not just over this current public health issue, but I've noticed it over the years. We saw over a hundred years ago when the Chinese and the Irish actually built a Chi, the transcontinental railroad, built by the Chinese community, and what happened after that, the United States pretty much excluded Chinese from coming into our country. Counselor Bach was talking about our good friend Lieutenant Colonel Woodhouse, who was a Tuskegee Airman, and the same, the same thing happened really with our Chinese community as well. They served in our country in the armed forces in World War I and World War II, and we didn't treat them well after they came back. So there is an anti-Chinese sentiment that's, that's here in the United States, and it's important for us to come together as a city, but as a country especially, and make sure that any type of discrimination does not take place, and we must stand up for everybody to make sure everybody's treated with respect and dignity. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Anyone else looking to make an announcement? Wonderful. I will just take a moment to say a few words. I know Counselor Campbell brought his name into this space, but people may know, we lost Jeep Jones over the weekend. Jeep was an amazing public servant to the City of Boston as a whole, served as a deputy mayor, proud Roxbury resident, has given so much to the city, and so, not just for his commitment to our, our city, but all that he has done beyond his service when he was deputy mayor, I think it's just important that we continue to lift him up, lift up his family, keep them in prayer, and he is certainly one of the names that we will close out this meeting with. So at this time, I'd like to ask all guests and our members, my colleagues, to please We will adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Arroyo, Maggie Elizabeth Hill; for Counselor Bach, Benjamin Peter Chabernaud; for Counselor Braden, Timothy Norton, Frances Danahy, and Dorothy Crain Walsh; for Counselor O'Malley, Barbara Shanahan; for Counselor Wu, Benny Lee Evans; for the Chair, Cynthia Violet; and for the entire council, Jimmy Donnelly and Clarence Jeep Jones. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today's meeting, it does so in the memory of the aforementioned individuals. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February twelfth, at twelve noon, in the IONELA Chamber, right here at City Hall. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, this meeting is now adjourned.